Okay, it is 9:00 AM, Monday, September 28th, 2020. Wilson County Commissioners' Court is now in session with a opening prayer by Ben Immanus Dicken of St. Murray's Catholic Church in Stockton.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, you are the real foundation of nations, raising them up to serve and care for the people dwelling in their boundaries. I thank you for making me a citizen of this land, of freedom and unlimited opportunities, which are the results of its Christian base. Send forth your spirit to this country and make it a source of wisdom and strength, order, and integrity throughout the world. Lord Jesus Christ, King of the universe, look with mercy on those who rule over us. Grant to our president and administration the grace to know and do your will. Let them serve all their subjects in truth and righteousness. Inspire our countrymen with the courage to make law for the good of all, rather than for few. Give our judges your spirit of wisdom and understanding, that they may discern the truth and impartiality and administer the law, and let all the people pitch in to make our way of government continue to work. And we ask this in Christ's name, amen.
My name is Richard O. Jackson, United States of America, and here the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas, Texas, one state, one indivisible.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have Commissioner Hyatt teleconference stand. We have a, oh, no. Okay, agenda item number three is public comments.
I have none at this time, Judge.
Agenda item number four, certificates of completion and awards.
I have none at this time.
Okay, moving right along. We are going to go to agenda item number 14, if y'all don't mind. We've got a group back there that would have to wait through the whole noon. So, agenda item number 14, Richard O. Jackson County Judge, Coney Y. 4-H and Youth Development Agent, discuss and take action on setting one day 4-H proclamation. Courtney?
Yes, so I am Court Dwight. I'm the 4-H agent here in the county. I have a group of kiddos here with me today to help me represent 4-H here in Wilson County. We are presenting the proclamation for one day 4-H in addition to the actual week of National 4-H Week. So National 4-H Week starts next week. It's the 4th through the 10th, and it's just a whole week of celebrating 4-H and the amazing kids that we have. And I'm gonna let them introduce themselves, tell you just a little bit about themselves, and then Hayden is going to go ahead and read our proclamation.
My name is Michael Lempus. I'm the second vice president for the 4-H County Council.
My name is Hayden Hayoski, and I am the president of the Wilson County Council.
Hello, my name is Luke Scrivener, and I'm the secretary for the county council.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Logan Baker, and I'm the first vice president for our county council.
I'm Joshua Scrivener.
I'm Carter Hayoski.
The National 4-H Week Proclamation. Whereas, the Wilson County Commissioners' Court is proud to honor the 4-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M Avrilite Extension Service for 113 years, providing experience-based education to youngsters throughout the Lone Star State. And whereas, this admirable program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for the whole child, including head, heart, hands, and health, helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members of our society. And whereas, it's more than 550,000 urban, suburban, and rural youth participants, ranging in age from eight to 19, hail from diverse ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds, and truly represent a cross-section of the state. And whereas, the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that it has today, were it not for the service of 22,000 volunteers, who have given generously of their time, talents, energies, and resources to the youth of Texas. And whereas, throughout its proud history, the 4-H program has developed positive role models for restless Texans, and through its innovative and inspiring programs, continues to build character and to instill the values that have made our state strong and great. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Wilson County Commissioners' Court hereby designated October 4th through 10th, 2020, as National 4-H Week in Texas, and commend the 4-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M Avrilite Extension Service, and the many men and women who have made the program a success. Thank you.
Okay, you've got a motion by Commissioner Hyatt to accept the one-day 4-H proclamation, and second by Commissioner Fowle. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Skip, can you hear us? Courtney, I guess keep the proclamation, and Commissioner Hyatt can come by one day when he gets a chance to sign it.
Okay.
Did you hear that, Skip?
Yes, I did.
One day, when you get a chance, go by AgriLab, make them sign the proclamation. Okay. So, is that agenda item 14? Now we're gonna go back to agenda item five, Richard O. Jackson County Judge, discuss and take action on phony maintenance contract for Wilson County Courthouse elevator. Is there something that we need to do that out or should we do that out, or is this just something, something to renew? Don't we do that? Listen.
What number, Judge?
Number five, agenda item five, phony contracts of the elevator maintenance.
How much is it?
What's that?
I have it.
I've got it here. Okay. Pricing and effective date, effective October 1st, 2020, $165.60 per month.
Now, that's just a renewal, I believe, right? That's just a renewal.
Yes. It's a renewal from, we've had it for the last, how many years? Okay, comparable.
Several years.
Yes. And it's, uh, under the price that it would take to go out for, to bid it out, so.
I'll make a motion, I agree.
Accept. Okay, a motion by Commissioner Wyeth.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gomez. Is there any discussion on the contract for the elevator service? I'll call a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we have the contract. Moving right along to agenda item number six, Richard O. Jackson County Judge, discuss and take action on holidays and paydays for 2021. And I passed them out. I know you don't have it, Skip, but it's the same, pretty much the same 14 holidays, just changing the date that we've had. And paydays are, all employees will continually be paid every other Friday. Okay, very good.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Wyeth, second by Commissioner Fowle, that we accept the slate of holidays and the paydays for 2021. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we're going to agenda item number seven, Richard O. Jackson County Judge, discuss and take action on memorandum of agreement, the state of Texas, Texas Parks and Wildlife, TPWD, and Wilson County, for use of the radio tower, land lease, and Floresville with Rudolph Rudy E. Schiphol by him, the fourth owner. Okay, this is a contract we've had for years. Motion by Commissioner Fowle. Second by Commissioner Gomez, that we continue the agreement that we've had. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, agenda item number eight, Richard O. Jackson County Judge, discuss and approve times and dates of regular Commissioners' Court meeting. That's another, see, the only thing different is on, uh, Monday, October 25th, we'll move to Monday. Tuesday, October 26th, that's a date that I've gone every year. We've always changed it, even this year. And then Monday, December 27th, we'll move to Tuesday, December 28th, because it was Christmas holiday.
And the October one was moving from 25th to 26th?
October the 25th was moved to October 26th. And December 27th moved to December 28th. Other than that, the Commissioners' Court meeting will be held the second and fourth Monday of every month at 9:00 AM. Motion by Commissioner Hyatt. Second by Commissioner Fowle. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now we're going to agenda item number nine, Richard O. Jackson County Judge, discuss and take action on Domestic Violence Awareness Month Proclamation. I'm gonna read the proclamation. Proclamation, Domestic Violence and Awareness and Prevention Month 2020. Whereas, the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, and dignity, security, and humanity, due to systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control, or, and/or abuse, including abuse to children and the elderly. Whereas, the problem of domestic violence, the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but cut across all economic, racial, societal barriers, and are supported by such social indifference, and whereas, the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, direct affecting individuals and society as a whole, here in this community, and throughout the United States and the world. And whereas, women are not only targets, young children and elderly also are victims. And sadly, emotional scars are often permanent, and domestic violence costs the United States companies at least $3.5 billion in lost work time, increased healthcare costs, higher turnover, and lower productivity. And where, it is battered women themselves who have been in the forefront of the efforts to bring peace and equality to the home. Now therefore, we do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. We call all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and business to increase their participation in our effort to prevent domestic violence, thereby strengthening the communities in which we live. Has anybody got anything they wanna add to this?
I do. My name is Carla. I am with the Valley and the Walden Shelter. I just wanted to let you guys know that we have some events coming up. We have our candlelight ritual, um, sorry, it's hard to talk with masks, our candlelight ritual, and we usually have it at the DME, but this year we're not gonna have it there. We're gonna have it like an online, we're gonna make like a video. So we asked that everybody send their pictures in to my email. If you've got some card, you can send those in by October 20th. The video is gonna be online on our social media, October 29th. We asked that you wear a purple shirt, or you can go call our office here in Floresville and pick up a purple ribbon, but it's just like a basic reception of you guys. And it has to be like each and every single one of you, like by yourself, not like a group. I mean, it could be a group. And then, we are also, and that's it, that's what we're having.
Thank you. Yes, only one. Motion by Commissioner Wyeth. Second by Commissioner Gomez, accept the proclamation. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Do you like a picture or anything?
Um, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
She's seen it, sorry. You're lucky to be wearing a mask.
Okay, moving right along to agenda item number 10. Richard O. Jackson County Judge, discuss and take action on allowing cats, children in lines in South Texas, to use a parking lot across from the street from 1108 Brevo Street for a trick or treat on October 31st, 2020, from 3:00 to 5:00. Just asking permission to use a parking lot to have their own little... Motion by Commissioner Gomez, second by Commissioner Fowle, that we allow them to do this. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? This motion carries.
I think you had a comment on that, Judge.
The thing about it is, Mr. Barris will, Barris will let you say something, but this was not on the agenda. We can't really act upon it, but we can, the Texas Commissioners' Court. I appreciate that, sir. If, uh, we're gonna go back to public comments, which, and Mark Barris, Forteville Chamber of Commerce, would like to...
Well, first off, thank you all for letting me speak. Basically, what we're trying to do is we're trying to put together an event for Halloween. It's gonna be, uh, like a parade, but kind of in reverse, because instead of having, you know, you can't have crowds and everything, so instead of having the crowd parade going by, we're gonna have the crowd and the parade going through town to see all the businesses and everything. We're gonna have three different contests running. One contest is gonna be a costume contest, it's gonna be online, so we're gonna accept entries to the Chamber of Commerce's website, and they'll be judging on that. And then there's gonna be two contests during the event. One will be for the cars, we're asking the people to decorate their vehicles. There will be judges there that will judge and decide which car is best decorated, and then people in their cars are gonna be viewing all the businesses, and they're gonna be telling us at the end which business they think is best decorated, and they're gonna have prizes offered to all. So, what we're requesting is we'd like to use a portion of the park area around the courthouse to set up booths for those businesses that don't have a footprint, or don't have a presence downtown, so they can set up like a pop-up canopy or something, and put some advertising in offer to the business, do a decoration, whatever they'd like to do for the holiday. And, uh, other than that, the only other thing that we're asking is that we can hand out candy at the end. Candy's gonna be prepared, the packages, we're gonna have people in gloves and masks and everything else following all the processes that are being done, so we'd just like the court to approve.
Okay, uh, I do not see anything, any reason not, won't be, but we just have to, since it was not on this, uh, this, today.
The fourth Monday, then, sir?
No, we're, the second Monday. No, first, what's today? This is the last, it'll be the 12th, what is the, is that the 12th?
October 12th.
It'll be on the 12th. We'll put it on the 12th, and I do not see any reason that it will not be allowed, so. Yeah, y'all can go ahead and do God beaming, I'll take the liberties, they go ahead and make the plans.
I appreciate that, sir.
And we'll, we're gonna use this as a formal date, and pass it next time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I think we also...
Okay. Moving right along to agenda item number 12, Albert Gomez Jr., oh, no, 11, excuse me. Richard O. Jackson County Judge, request and approve contract with Texas Rio Grand Legal Aid for our regional, and what this should be is public defender program. Regional public, regional defender program is for capital. Do you have a copy of that? If you wanna...
No, I don't.
Okay. This is something we need to act on today, as far as getting in this program. We've, they're through Atascosa County, we have applied for a grant, we have been granted, it has been granted, so, something we need to move forward. Home?
What's the grant, sir?
Can I, can I see the, the contract that you have?
Yes. And I can find that.
Okay.
That, uh, at this time, if this county has a capital...
Okay, this is the contract.
That's the contract with...
This is the contract with Atascosa County?
Uh-huh.
For the, well, Texas...
For the program, yes, but it doesn't, I, I, does it say Rio Grande?
No. Uh, our contract is with Atascosa County, they're the main county, there are the main counties that are involved, they're, uh, the lead county.
Okay, then some of these, some of those. What this does is, you know, right now, we have a capital case that we are prosecuting...
No, this is not capital. This is our public defender. This is for county courts and district courts. They're gonna have a public defender instead of all the attorneys that come in like they do. They're gonna have their own...
So, individual counties won't be appointed to a defendant. This will be a group of lawyers, any one of whom will be assigned to come and represent them, and it should be significantly cheaper for us, significantly. And Atascosa is...
The first year, I know Michelle has had, uh...
Some involvement.
Yeah. The first year is gonna save us a lot of money, and the second year is gonna, it's gonna eventually level out, and we're gonna be even, because you don't know what the future brings, but it's gonna come in less than what we're paying now for all the attorneys. We're gonna pay a certain price, like right now, when the attorneys, and they have, they will submit a bill, and you don't know what that bill's gonna be, for me, you know, if they have to go to court, or they have to, uh, have other, have an investigator have something happen. They, they'll add that to their bill. This whole thing will not happen with this. If we're paying Rio, uh, Rio Grande Legal Aid, then they furnish all of that. They have, they'll have their own investigators, their own attorneys, everything.
So the idea behind the grant is that there's going to be a regional public defender program set up, a regional public defender office set up, somewhere between here and Atascosa County. Atascosa is the lead, we are sub-grantee from Atascosa. And then, the benefits are so that our indigent population will be represented equally, and, you know, they will have representation, they won't have to be calling all the time and, and, uh, fighting the battles of getting assigned an attorney. There are obviously cost benefits to the county, but as I said, Atascosa is the lead, we are a sub-grantee of that, of that grant with Texas River.
Do you know who the person, the lead person is of Atascosa?
I, is it...
I'm not sure if it's coming out, Judge Charlie's the one that's...
It's coming out of Judge Charlie's office, okay. I was just saying, who was the lead person in Atascosa?
Judge Charlie.
So it's coming out of his office, okay. That's who I, that's who I sent this back to after we made changes, our changes.
Is this a fixed number, Judge, so to speak?
Yes.
Do we have a portion of it? So, do you know going into the year what your expenses are gonna be?
Or, yes.
Is there some cost share on it?
Well, no, I think it's gonna be cheaper because it's the volume, it's five counties worth of...
Four.
Okay, what happens to it? Basal, then more. Uh, and the, the agreement with Rio Grande Legal Aid will be something like, any lawyer that comes into this, we're gonna pay them $100 an hour, which will significantly help because of, for instance, some of the San Antonio lawyers that we've had to use before might charge 250 or 300 dollars. So we're gonna be assured that there's gonna be a, kind of a dollar amount that we're gonna share. I haven't seen a scale, if they've made one, how much each county will pay. I imagine it's gonna have something to do with how many cases we have. And, you know, if we had five cases in a year, then we would have to pay more than Atascosa if they only had one case.
Okay, this is, uh, Wilson County agrees to spend funds necessary for any defense to pay Atascosa a pro-rated share of the public defender, specifically 25.97 percent, which, to me, that is a great number. It's got Atascosa quite a bit more than that in Karnes County and, uh, Freeo County. So, uh, 'cause our caseload is very, very similar to Atascosa County, so they're gonna be footing according to how they've, they've done it, and this is David Hall, Rio Grande Legal Aid, that came up with this formula. And he, uh, he figured it out, he got our information, he got Atascosa's information, he got Karnes', he got Freeo's, and he got Basal's. Basal chose not to go, go with it, but he gave everybody, uh, the printout, I guess you could say, of this is how many cases that y'all have, and this is what the percentage, this is what the cost would be. The final number has not gone down other than what he gave us before, but this is an agreement that we have to pay for Atascosa County to go forward to get the, and most of it, a lot of it, this first year is gonna be paid for by grant.
And, just a question from the other end, I'm assuming that the representation would be, from, from a quality standpoint, for these folks, is consistent with what we've been to have?
And they said, they're gonna have to implement, or start a whole other public defender office, so they're gonna have to hire attorneys. And they're gonna be hiring some of the attorneys that we used.
And that would be the issue, I think we'll have to look at is the quality, because, uh... We'll have to look at is the quality, because many, many of their lawyers are brand new lawyers. So I imagine they'll pull together a group of the experienced lawyers who will be dealing with this. But remember, you know, defendants can always hire their own lawyers. This will just be cases where they cannot afford to hire a lawyer, and then we assign them one. And then this configuration will keep the cost to the minimum.
Indigent defense is one of the most expensive mandates that Wilson County has from the state. We spend hundreds of thousands of dollars every year on indigent defense. And this, this is, this is going to be a relief this, this next year.
I don't remember the numbers, but in my office I have from a meeting that I went to a few years ago, what Wilson County was paying, listed all the counties, what Wilson County was paying in 1970, I'm sorry, in 2000 versus, I think this took it up through like 2000, 2010, and it was amazing, but, and what the change was. I mean, you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's, it's out.
Yes, and this, this is going to give us a relief on that.
How long is that grant good for? How many years?
It is the first, well, you have studied it more than.
Well, there is, this is a part of the sustainability grant. This first grant, I believe, is for two years, and then you have the option of reapplying for another sustainability grant. So that's, that's essentially the initial time period.
And here, here's the deal, saying, you know, we got, we've got the grant, you've been awarded the grant, we're going to hear the grant for this year and next year, and if something goes wrong, say we decided we don't like it, we can go back to what we're doing now, which is costing us a lot of money. This is a chance for some relief.
See, there, there have been a few concerns brought to the attention of all of the judge and myself and even the auditor. You know, what about our attorneys? And then is it truly going to be quality service? And are our indigent population going to be served? And from.
Let me, excuse me, let me put something in there too. Efficiency of the court. We have a whole array of attorneys that come in. Some of them come in and do their job and accomplish their goal. They, they come in, they get, they meet with their client, and they resolve something. Some of them come in, and they get appointed an attorney, and, okay, we'll reset it and go on, and next time they come in, okay, we reset and go on. These people won't have any choice. They're going to have to meet with them because there's nobody else to. And like I said, attorneys are like anybody else. There's real good ones, and there's some fair ones, and then there's some that aren't so good. This will eliminate some of that. It will, it will help the efficiency of the court. And if it doesn't help the efficiency of the court, I'm going to be ready to go back to the way it was, which I can't help but think is going to be good, because we have some attorneys too that are, at the end of the day, they're, they've got their account sheet out there, and they're seeing, okay, what am I, what am I going to charge the county? And who pays this? Indigent defense. This is not come from us, and this is not, we get a whole $30,000 grant now, resolved, to take care of hundreds of thousands of dollars of indigent defense. Indigent defense comes out of our taxpayers' pockets. It, it's one of those deals. You can be the victim, and you can also be paying your, the perpetrator that robbed your house, robbed your store, brokerized your house or whatever, you're going to be paying indigent defense also.
So some of those concerns were brought to the Texas Rio Grande Agency as well as some of the other counties that were involved in this. And they, the Texas Rio Grande said that any concern that have come up in the quality of service or any kind of service that has come up, they've addressed it with Texas Rio Grande, and Rio Grande has resolved issues. So I've also done some literature review on nearby counties who have gone to this type of program. While there is probably one or two that have their concerns about it, there are several that have rave reviews about the program. So, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of how you set up the communication and coordination locally. So I think, you know, there's probably a good chance that the county attorney's office should definitely be involved as like a local project manager type thing to monitor.
You know, you know how, you pretty quickly pick up on the lawyers who aren't doing a good job. And if that comes up, then a complaint can be filed, and they'll send us another lawyer.
Yes. If we are not.
Do you know the capital cases are not?
No, these are not the capital cases. The capital case is still going to go through Loveit County.
This is any criminal case.
This is the county court, class A and B misdemeanors, and district court for felonies.
And it is not CPS. CPS is not represented in these cases.
And I know two counties right now that are, Texas, that's Bivoke and Beeville, Bee County.
Yeah, Bee is the one, Bee is one of the ones that love it.
Yes.
Any more questions? I'll entertain a motion to put the interlocutor in.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gomis, second by Commissioner Hayek. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So this motion, we have a.
If you'll sign both of them, I'll make a copy for the county clerk, and then I'll send those two back to Atascosa for their signature.
Okay. Now we're going to agenda item 12. Albert Gomez, Commissioner Precinct One, requests permission to use a portion of the courthouse lawn to post some National Night Out signs.
So, good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Sheriff, Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Gomez, for sponsoring our request. Most of you were able to attend last year's National Night Out, and we were able to host it at the Defense Center in Wissel, a fabulous event, which we showed our appreciation for PD, first responders in the city and community as well as the county. We want to be able to do something this year as well. You may have read in the Wilson County News, Gregory said in our column about our brainstorming, there's also the invitation to the community in the newspaper, which ran last week, and it will run again this week. Because of the pandemic, we had to think outside the box. We could not host a large gathering, so this year we thought of hosting a drive-by parade. We asked that the police department and first responders line up around courthouse square, along C, taking a left along the front here around Arcadia, behind me, and then back around D on the evening of October 6. I think it's very important that the community show their appreciation to their first responders and police departments, because they are always there to protect us, and they need to know that we sincerely appreciate that. So by hosting a drive-by parade, we're merely asking that the community come out and show their appreciation by lining up. It's a drive-by parade, family vehicle, street legal vehicle, and they will be parading up C, and this is the evening of October 6. And we would like to put some four-by-six National Night Out signs along courthouse grounds, and also I brought around along some yard signs that I had made up, which each of you can have today, and I will also distribute to the community as they sign up to participate. My request is to post some advertisement for National Night Out, and then hopefully get a good turnout from the community. It's the evening of October 6. We will parade through at 7:00 P.M. And we ask the sheriff and Commissioner Fowle and Gomez if they are available and if you can help us judge for the most creatively decorated vehicles, because we have also acquired three ring doorbells, which we will be awarding to the creatively decorated vehicles that, that. So the city did sign the proclamation on Thursday, September 24, during the National Night Out. And I do want to stress that a lot of communities around us have canceled their events. Texas has been number one for hosting these events nationwide. Other states aside from Texas have celebrated in August. This year, because of the pandemic, everyone's going to celebrate on October 6 nationwide. So it's our opportunity to come out in droves and show our support. We will have drone coverage, we will have photos, and I will submit to the National Association of Amalgas to show how Wilson County came out to support the first responders.
Motion by Commissioner Gomez. Second by Commissioner Fowle, that we allow National Night Out signs on the courthouse lawn and whatever else that we need to do to cooperate with them. The event. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item 13, Richard L. Jackson County Judge, discussing take action on allowing Wilson County livestock shows to make a bill in an area to store their pens.
You want to talk about this? Judge? I mean, I want to agree that they want, it's not going to be attached to the barn itself or building itself, it's going to be up next to it. It's just some place to store the hog, goat, sheep, panel, pen, get them outside of the barn. There's going to be a lock-in area. Just have the panels around the outside, goat and panels, cover the roof. Just some place to store their, basically their portable panels. They.
Who's the, who's building them?
The livestock shows are going to pay for everything. They're, they're doing all of it. They just want.
Where are they going to put it?
They're looking right now on the east side, where they, where they, I don't know if you know where they got the old hog panels stacked up right now by the outside, either there or on the northeast corner, which will be out of the way, around the backside of it, either location. It won't cost the county any money. All they're doing is asking for permission to be able to build it on the ground. And it won't be attached to the building until there's something down the road or you need to do something, take it down or whatever. It won't affect the structure of the building itself.
Is that something that the county has to ensure on our policy because it's on our property?
I wouldn't think so.
Well, I would say I wouldn't insure what they built, but I would leave our insurance on it for personal injury. So if someone was injured there, we would sue as well as them.
I don't have a problem with it. I, I think that we ought to, they ought to propose, but we ought to dictate the location.
And someone.
It sounds like on the northeast end probably makes the most sense, but it makes, you know, panels can be stolen pretty easily, and so it makes sense to have them there and to have them in a locked enclosure. I just think that the county should dictate which, which location. And as far as I'm concerned, you, from my perspective, you could be the representative.
They're kind of observer while they're building it to make sure it's what you think it should be.
Okay, right now the panels are inside, and they're kind of more or less in the way when we do the food bank distribution. This is just be more area of getting them out of, out of the way.
Well, I think it makes sense. We, I just think we should dictate whether.
I make a motion, this is motion by Commissioner Fowle. Second by Commissioner.
I'd like to add a little more discussion if you don't mind.
Go right ahead.
I think whatever they build should be donated to the county. It's county property.
It will be, it will be attached, so it's going to have to be donated to the county. It's going to be attached. Once you attach something, you can't, you can't remove it.
Right.
I thought at the beginning you said not attached to it.
They're not attached, it's not going to be attached to the building itself.
To the building, but it's going to be attached to the ground.
Yes.
Oh, well, yeah.
It's going to be attached to the ground. They're going to have to have posts and.
Not to the building itself.
But not to the building itself.
I would think that they, thinking is one thing, and I guess happening is something else, but I, I would think that their thought would be that they would be building it, and it would be their.
Well, I, I think they're in it for the long term.
Yes.
But we could make that clear, I guess, until it becomes.
Yeah, I guess we could.
As long as we don't have to pay the insurance for it.
Well, we're, I think for our safety, we've got to pay for personal insurance.
Absolutely.
But not for our insurance on the pen. They can pay for that.
Unless it becomes donated to the county as county property.
Well, that would be just the building, not the, what they put in.
Oh. Just the structure itself.
Do you mind if I ask that, that we have, they have floor inside and not being insured by us?
We probably need a little contract sometime. Which I can look on my call. It just sets that out.
Okay. Just make it clear to them that they realize that they go to this, this county property. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. So moving right along to agenda item number 15, we've already done 14. Richard L. Jackson County Judge, Michelle Morder, grants manager, 15, hey, discussing ratifying the submission of the Center for Tech and Civic Life, a nonprofit organization, grant program for the elections department. Well, this is going to be, we're submitting it, and she's also got more meetings.
Good morning, Judges, Commissioners. This grant came about, I guess Olga received something in her email and forwarded it to me. I reviewed it. So it is a grant with this nonprofit organization, Center for Tech and Civic Life. It is nonprofit, so their rules and parameters are different than federal government, state government. We needed to fill, fill out a quick webpage on our stats, our registered voters, and what we needed the money for. And it indicated there that the sooner we fill it out, the faster we could be awarded, and that is a true statement. So I, I mentioned it to the judge, and so I'm requesting your approval on the, to ratify the submission of this grant. We were notified Saturday that we were approved for a grant for $33,000 and $815. We don't necessarily need to use it all, and that's obviously where Olga comes in to determine how much of that she needs, if she needs all of it. The county will have until December 31 to spend it. And then, of course, anything that is not used should be returned to the nonprofit. It is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to educate and educate the public and ensure their voting and their elections are transparent and inclusive and.
So is this not carefully designed, or I'm confused?
Yeah, what's the purpose?
The purpose of the, the purpose of the grant is to allow for local governments to, you know, purchase election-type equipment, whether it's PPE or, in this case, for COVID. They received a grant, the nonprofit received a grant, COVID-related, $250 million, and they're awarding it to local governments who apply.
Did you by any chance check out their nonprofit status on the Secretary of State's calendar? If you did, just do that.
Yeah, I sure will.
So we can see.
To verify.
We just want to make sure it's not political in any way.
Right, right. We did receive an agreement on Saturday as well. I forwarded it to the county attorney's office. Since we received it after the due date for submissions for this court agenda, it'll be our next, next agenda. Two, three, seven, if everything pans out, it's one of those three. But they gave. But they gave, you know, such items that it could be used for poll workers, nonpartisan voter education, personal protective equipment, poll worker recruitment funds, training expenses, holding place rental and cleaning expenses for voting on election day, temporary staff, voting materials and languages other than English, vote by mail, absentee voting equipment or supplies, and election administration for them. So those are some of the things that it could be used for.
I'll make a motion and we go forward. Motion by Commissioner Wylie, second by Commissioner Fowle, that we go forward with this. Is there any more discussion?
How much was it?
$33,815.
Thank you.
$33,815. Now, that, obviously, we don't have to accept that much.
Right, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passed. It's passed, and we've already got it, we've already been approved for it. That's pretty amazing. 15B, discuss and take action to approve the Texas Volkswagen Environmental Medication Program, TECs, BEMP, grant administered by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality for all Wilson County precincts.
As you all know, we've been working on this for the past couple of months, but it's really kind of started going, driving home, like, there is a deadline. This grant came about, a lawsuit between the United States and the state of California and Volkswagen, basically to reduce the nitrogen oxide emissions from refuse vehicles, trash vehicles, garbage vehicles, such as that. So the state was awarded along some of that. There is a deadline to apply of October 8th. And so I've talked with you all individually about the various vehicles that you all are eligible to receive this grant to replace those vehicles, to reduce those nitrogen oxide emissions. What you have before you are the old vehicles in your precinct, and it is an 80/20 cost share for the next two years to replace those vehicles. I developed a spreadsheet that coincides with the actual application for the information that TCEQ will need. And highlighted the items that are yellow that if you all can help me with, or if you have a salesman that you want to deal with in replacing these vehicles, that we can get that information for. The items that are in green, it's internal, that I can work through the county clerk's office and the county tax office. So this is just a request to submit this grant and move forward, and I have the signature pages for you. I did, we did have the option to just submit one application, but I felt to better track and monitor between the grants department and the auditor's office and whatnot as far as financial regulatory that it would be best to submit for the application.
Commissioner Fowle told me he thought it was a good idea, but he wasn't sure how much gravel he'd call on the Volkswagen.
I thought we had to get the help of Commissioner's Court in it.
In the Volkswagen?
Yeah, we could do that, like, tax, like, tax Volkswagen. It'd be heavy equipment, any kind of heavy.
That is a different grant program, it's called the TERPS, and that deadline has already passed. I think there's still some other grants available, so I'll check in, I'll check in.
This is a, this is a good program.
So just to give you an idea of the money that we're talking about, like, most of y'all's vehicles that are eligible are within that 1995 to 2006 range. So the eligible award for that in replacing that between, or vehicle between the years of 2004 to 2007 is anywhere from $72,000 to a little over $74,000. So that's probably eligible.
And that's up to, so just to confirm, we've talked about it, so if you've got a $72,000 allowance, so to speak, and you've got a $100,000 or $110,000 dump truck, you get the $72,000 and you get the dump truck for $40,000.
Right, that's our match.
Which is a significant difference than the last dump truck that I had to buy.
And then, obviously, some of the older vehicles that you all have eligible, those that are 2003 and later, they actually could be completely replaced. We still have to do a cost share, but the amount on that is $126,294 per vehicle.
Say that in one word.
$126,294.
If they're older than 2003?
Yep, 2003 and older, which I think a couple of you all have.
But as we discussed, I have a couple of things that fit that, but we're talking dump trucks only.
Right.
Talking water trucks or motor truck or any of that sort of thing.
So water trucks are eligible, is this one or not? Just the dump trucks?
So it's, what's eligible is dump trucks, garbage and recycling, gravel trucks, roll-off trucks, sweeper trucks, and chipper trucks. And I think there was a chipper.
Oh, yeah, the chipper truck.
One might, or not.
That's owned by all four precincts.
Yeah, I just.
Although I think it still runs pretty well, I don't know.
I used it in a couple of years, but no worries.
I haven't used it in a while. It's the chipper that they're a problem with. All right, so do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion and we go forward with it.
All certain.
Motion by Commissioner Fowle, second by Commissioner Wylie, if you go forward. TECs VMP grant, administered by TCEQ.
The important point to all of this is that if you're going to have one, you better have everything to this young lady by probably six at the very latest, because you have to have to turn it in on the eighth.
Right, I'll probably have to drive it up there, because they did say that even if you mailed it and it doesn't get to the office within TCEQ, it wouldn't be considered, so.
Now, do we, is this what you emailed us about, we have to get a mechanic?
Yes, yes, you do need a mechanic to sign off on that, and that, it says, it says right there on the first page, where the mechanic needs to verify basically that it runs and operates, and it's not up on blocks or anything like that, and they need to verify that for all the vehicles. And of course, he needs to.
He can take it off the block.
He needs to sign it. There's also some, one thing I did not mention is there are some pictures that are required, and I know you helped me with that for your vehicles, Commissioner Fowle, and they brought you some more pictures that they need. Yeah, so I had talked with Commissioner Hike about his, his woman, Commissioner Wiley. They have a salesman to schedule some time out.
I have him scheduled for Wednesday of this week.
To do some, to do some of these pictures and get some of that information that I need to do.
If he's going to get to sell, do you have to come out?
Absolutely.
Can he, do you know him?
I don't know. He told me he normally didn't go sell stuff.
I bought this.
I'll talk to him and see. I mean, if you're, if you're going to go through him, I'm sure, you know, I bought my last dump truck.
That's, that's.
So I contacted him last Thursday and had him get in contact with this young lady so that he could understand what it was he was looking for. I will contact him later today, and how many trucks do you have? Three, three? You got one? You're interested? It's Peterbilt, is it? I'll get ahold of it.
Guess we'll, we bought all of them.
I think if you, you get us by four, I get one free, I think that's a good idea. Yeah, I'll contact him.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so I will get this signed and get it back to you. Now, we're moving right along to agenda item number 16. Albert Gamas Jr., Commissioner Precinct 1, discuss and take action on investment policy and investment. I think Jan Hortal's name should have been on here too. Go ahead, Jan.
It's just the same investment policy that we renew every year, we have to have it approved in Commissioner's Court.
How much interest are we getting in these? Going down, down, down?
Down, 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 no. And I had a conference last week, and they said they had very poor outlooks for the interest rate for a while. I'm sorry to tell you on that.
Need a motion? I'll make a motion. Motion by Commissioner Gamas. Second by Commissioner Fowle. Fowle got it, skip. That we accept the investment policies and procedures and strategies? Okay, is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we have set this in place again for another year. If there's a paper, you need to come by and sign on this investment stuff.
Is it your office or?
No, Eva's office.
Eva's office?
Yes. Okay. Moving right along, this is Leanne's time. Agenda item number 17, Leanne Hocheck, EMC 17A, utility permit number 618, Rio Water Supply Corporation, precinct two, County Route 134, review and approve. I'll make a motion. Motion by Commissioner Fowle.
All certain.
Second by Commissioner Wylie. The permit number 618, is there any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, now we're moving right along to 17B, subdivision of the timber, review and approve final class, discuss and take action.
Yeah, this one's off of FM 775, and it's got Highcaster Creek that goes, runs through it.
It's kind of diagonally across from Rosewood.
And it's going to be a gated subdivision, so the roads are going to be private. And in lieu of posting a financial guarantee, you'll notice a one-foot non-access easement around the roads. So they will not be able to sell any lots until the roads have been built, constructed, inspected, and approved, and there are letter of map provisions submitted to them.
So it's a private gated community? Okay, and they've got a, they're going to have a police man around the roads with a foot?
Yes.
And we still have to approve them? Still have to.
Yes, we have to make sure they're built to our standards.
Okay.
Yes, and then if they meet all the requirements, then we release that easement. And it's gone before the committee and it's given a favorable recommendation, and it meets all the requirements.
Leanne, has anybody ever looked at, I see this is going to be on Highcaster Creek again, but the impact it's going to have downstream, you know, we keep putting all these subdivisions on, there's one particular creek, you know, and yeah, I know, I know he did this, but he didn't look at downstream all the way to Bentwood or Shannon.
Well, according to our regulations, there cannot be any impact, and that's why a lot of these citizens are having potential retention, because they cannot have any impact.
Commissioner, I'm Brad with Rappel's Engineers, so yeah, we did, per the county ordinance, you cannot have the impact upstream. So we, we had an engineer do a flood study to the property, and with the road crossing we're at, and we have to put blocks over it to convey a hundred, form underneath the road, and with that culvert, it builds a headwater behind it, and that headwater basically attenuates the flow. It's got some storage naturally back behind that culvert when it builds up. So they ran a report that shows there's no increase from the runoff from our property. And the county's engineers reviewed that and approved it. We did do, we had a respect, engineering, you would rank it analysis, those are the experts on this type of flood study stuff, so we submet over to them, and they ran all that to show we had no impression on the site.
It's kind of hard to get water down through that sand anyway, isn't it?
It is, it is.
I mean, because I know y'all got some pretty good side of coal that's going in, you know, and there's lots of water.
It is, yeah, there's a lot of rock and sand out there.
I know that ever since they built the city industrial park out here on 537, it's created more advantage.
Absolutely.
Downstream.
That's the main thing we look at in the county ordinance is, is stormwater around? That's the first thing we want to take a look at the size and how do we not increase that runoff from the property. So we've got those culverts there, and we also have the text on culverts there on 775 that we can't submit increase to, so, but this one worked out pretty well. We're with that, with those culverts, we're putting it for Highcaster, it builds up stormwater back behind that for last storage there, to basically slow runoff so it's not released once we go over it and purge it.
Just a question I have, there's a lot of suburb is being channeled into the High Caster. Lots of common. North end.
Driveways.
Driveways.
Driveways, rooftops. But your ordinance is written where it basically says you can't send any increase of that from the county, so let's get in that.
And there's some floods that will happen, no matter what you've got, it's going to flood. I had, a couple of years ago, when I had that big lane, I had fences out in the middle, there wasn't a house within a mile, had a fence on the side of a hill wash out. There's just some times that you can't help it. I'll make a motion. Motion by Commissioner Wylie. Motion by Commissioner Wiley. Second by Commissioner Gomez, to approve this plan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need some more of these?
No, no. Since I didn't have like this one, I don't wish.
Got it? Skip, this is nobody, you have to come by and sign. Leanne will have it.
Yes, come to my office.
Get to Leanne's office.
Okay.
People wanting to move into precinct four. That's true.
Okay. Moving right along to seventeen C subdivision, Hidden Ranch, discuss and take action on dedication of the vans with roads.
Okay, we have completed construction of the roads and drainage improvements in that subdivision. They've been inspected and, uh, approved, and they're ready to be accepted.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gomez.
I'll say.
Second by Commissioner Wiley. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, this one. Okay. Moving along with agenda item eighteen, Ellen Baker Health and Public Safety, eighteen A. Discuss and approve interlocal agreements with Wilson County Emergency Services District one, two, three, four, five, both voluntary department, voluntary department, and Three Oaks voluntary department.
Yeah, MZIPA has the contracts as well as the next item, which is mutual aid agreement between the departments with each other. Uh, it's the same as last year, there has been one sentence added to some of them because it was on some and not on other. Uh, and it more or less said, and it's under the, uh, the date range of the effective date to the, to the ending date, and underneath there it just says it'll take effect upon the effective date, whether it's signed or not at that time. That's the change.
Um, Ms. Perner, oh, Ms. Perner, I'm sorry. I'll phone her, your contracts, uh. The Assistant County Attorney has, you, uh, gone over it and has reviewed it, I guess you would say, and said, okay.
I'll make a motion. We approve of this.
Motion by Commissioner Wiley. Second by Commissioner Gomez. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So now we're moving to eighteen B. Approve the mutual aid agreement between the agencies and the interlocal agreements.
The, uh, interlocal agreement, I mean, the mutual aid agreement between the agencies in the, in the, in the interlocal agreement, it says that you have to have mutual aid agreements with other agencies that are on that contract. And so that's what that is. It's a mutual aid agreement between the department TSDs with each other. It's, uh, one document. Uh, there's always little bit changes to that one, mainly is from the, on signature page, from the, from the title of president to chief or chief to president, depending on who they want to sign the document. I have one of those this morning, I haven't changed it for. That's the only changes that have been made, and yet others in the day.
Motion for this?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Paul. Second by Commissioner Gomez, to approve mutual aid agreements. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Going to agenda item number nineteen, Jan Hortal County Treasurer, Financial Reports. You got it?
Yes, my classmate was out to New Orleans this morning.
This is for July and August.
Yes.
Do I have any questions again?
Jan. I'll make a motion.
I just, we, we, we were talking about getting these grants for the, our new truck. If we want KD off, we may have finance down. Would there be a penalty or anything like that?
I will call and check on it, for your call.
Motion by Commissioner Gomez. Second by Commissioner Paul, we accept the financial reports for July and August. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Judge, I have a question before we move on to the next one.
Yes, sir.
Um, back to the, to the trucks, I can't remember what, what item it was, but we're looking at the potential, I think you said three, and you said one. So we're looking at, um, seven trucks, which is almost a, a half a million dollars. It's not a half a million dollars, but it's over four hundred thousand dollars. Now, actually, it's more than that. I mean, when you're looking at the cost of the trucks, you're looking at three quarters of a million dollars is the value of seven trucks, at least. Uh, the part that, that we're gonna have to, to finance for each one is going to be, I don't know, thirty thousand dollars per. So we've got seven trucks at thirty thousand dollars. How are we going to handle, um, let's just pick one, you just, eight truck. You've got eight truck, you're getting seventy-two thousand dollars. You've got a, a hundred and ten thousand dollar truck. Um, we're not gonna get our money immediately. We, we, we know we're gonna get the money, but we're gonna have to harder the trucks. How are we gonna handle that within the system? Because each of us may be able to, I've got two, all has three. Can we pay for those vehicles out of the general fund except for our match? And then whenever the money comes in, have that go to the general fund?
Uh, the, have to, uh, Mr. Wiley is, are we going to be allowed to receive the trade-in value of the trucks that we're saving? Does that cover a significant part of our share?
No, the, because what, what they're going to do is that they're gonna give us seventy-two thousand dollars as the value of that truck, and then they're gonna put that truck out of commission.
Right. And some of the trucks, um, that have been identified only have a value of like twenty thousand dollars. So you're, you're basically getting a fifty thousand dollar gift card, so to speak, to, to buy a new truck.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's not necessarily the value that they're at now. This is something that the, the, the US government, Volkswagen, and everything has set the value for in order to expend those monies over the second time frame.
Okay, thank you.
Again, it, um, we have a line item in our approved budget for county matching grant funds. Um, and if it gets to a point where it, it depends on if they're all gonna be purchased at the same time, or we're gonna do it incrementally. Once we reach the maximum of that county grant match funds, then I'll come back to the board to request preapproval for purchase and then reimburse, uh, once we get the grant money.
I would think they'd probably be all about the same time, wouldn't they? You basically gonna have the grant, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, we have to do it in a couple of years, you know, they're gonna be pretty close together, if not all of a sudden, yeah.
It's, you know, I looked at the report here, I've, you know, I've got a truck that I bought, um, I guess I've made thirty-four payments, and, uh, I still owe just about what it is they're allowing us as the, uh, as the trade. So this, this is something that we need to take advantage of.
I agree.
Obviously, but I'm just trying to figure out how it would work and not, not penalize the, the, the precincts or the county. And I don't know from a financing standpoint if we could make, you know, uh, 'cause we're gonna wanna find any sorts of difference, I would think, the difference between the different. But it's definitely something we need to take advantage of, I mean, no doubt about it. 'Cause I got two of them, probably qualify for a total.
Okay.
That's all, I just wanted to raise that, that issue.
We got a motion by Commissioner Gomez, we get a second? Maybe Commissioner Paul? Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, now we're moving to agenda item number twenty. Okay, Jervetie Bott for Human Resource General Specimens, payroll and personal changes. Is there a signature, worthy signature?
I guess there is nothing to approve.
On the, on the top, on the. Can I jump? We always have a.
I gave you the, the copies. Did you sign everything? But my natural, your process.
Oh, we already got them?
Yes, I have them.
Okay.
Except for Skip. Yes.
I'll make a motion.
I think I may approve it twice.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
It was so good, we did it twice.
Yes.
Amy Medina began working as a dispatcher with the Sheriff's Department making fifteen thirty-eight per hour and thirty-two thousand dollars annually effective September twenty-first. Dorothy Jordan received a promotion to Corporal Corrections Officer at the Sheriff's Department, and will receive rent pay in the amount of twenty-five dollars per month. Laura Trenden down promoted to Corporal Corrections Officer at the Sheriff's Department, and will be receiving rent pay in the amount of twenty-five dollars per month. Christopher Henio was terminated from his position as a dispatcher at the Sheriff's Department effective, effective September sixteen. And Mari Sella Rodriguez was terminated from her position as a corrections officer at the Sheriff's Department effective September twentieth. Dorothy Holcomb will, will retire from her position as the clerk at the Sheriff's Department effective September twenty-seventh.
Thank you. Oh, and for next time, there's no line of changes or anything?
Yes, sir.
And Dorothy's daddy is retiring again?
Yes, I, I wasn't able to effectively give y'all her years of service until I go back into her file and see.
Does the sheriff gotta find a cook then? Gotta find a cook? Use a cook?
Use a cook? Yeah, I'm coming.
Okay. Uh, agenda item twenty-one, Brenda Trevino, county auditor, financial reports and bills.
Um, total amount of bills is three hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty cents. Um, the. Um, and the, uh, I think, um, ordinary, the, uh, the only, uh, thing I wanted to bring you to note is, is this is at their first EML security for the control panel at the jail, because I needed to have that check, um, cut and issued for, uh, prior to the end of this fiscal year, so all the whole thing on to that check, they, they are in the process and pretty close to, I think they have some people out there, uh, doing all of the installations and the soil and, uh, so, but you guys had already approved that.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gomez. Second by Commissioner Haig, to accept the, the bills from the county auditor. Is there any discussion, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so, we're moving right along. You have any financial report?
I'm sorry.
Do you have a financial report?
Uh, no.
Oh, no? Okay. Okay, so, at ten twenty-eight, we are adjourned.